Good afternoon, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. As we do all meetings, we will start with invocation. Today, John Phillips, Minister Central Christian Church, then followed by Rob Alman, our interim county auditor, to lead us in the two pledges of allegiance. John?
Father, we thank you for our judge and pray that you would bless him and protect him and his family. Lord, may our county commissioners be known as people that seek you your face in all we say and do. Thank you for the privilege to live in a country that's free. We pray for our president leaders. Today, Lord, we give you the glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, John. Rob?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all. I am in the right place. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution of Texas, one and one.
We're gonna get it right one day. We really have to get that right at some point, and I'm thinking about having Pete put it up on the, on the screen, I mean, just, right? Because we're doing it injustice, and, alright. I had one for you, too, but...
Let me start off with the first one that was turned in, Mr. Herbert Charles Aldridge III. Charlie?
My name is Charles Aldridge. I live in the community of Rangerville. In the past two and a half years, I've had close to $10,000 worth of equipment stolen from my property. Three riding lawnmowers, motorcycle. Last night, they tried to get into my garage again. I've contacted the sheriff every single time something happens. I've contacted other levels of law enforcement, and I've contacted different levels of the county government. I'm asking for your help. It's getting out of my control. The only other thing I know to do is sit out all night with a 12-gauge. Can y'all please help me?
You spoke to Commissioner Tamayo, I guess, out and go. Out there somewhere. And that is Cesar Diaz's precinct? Is that Constable from La Fedia?
That would be covered by Sheriff Diaz.
What I told, what I told Mr. Aldridge was that, you know, you and I can call Constable Diaz and ask him to maybe step, step up patrols. Are they happening? And ask the sheriff's office as well. Are they happening at certain times? I mean, between midnight and three in the morning, or any time during the day?
Historically, it's been between four and six in the morning, but yesterday, it was between four in the afternoon and eight o'clock in the evening.
Wow.
So, they're getting bolder. And it's not just me in the neighborhood, there are several, my neighbors have been hit all over the years also. Now, one of my thoughts, sir, is if the county, and I've contacted the DA's office, if the county can have a task force to bust eight-liners, why can't we get a task force to bust burglars?
Okay, well, we'll pass that along to the DA's office as well. But I will, I will tell you that, that you have every right to protect your property. I think there's a law that was enacted, Castle Law, and you have every right to protect your property, and, you know, you might have to do that. But, because we can't be everywhere, but I will make the phone call to Constable Diaz tomorrow morning. I think Commissioner Tamayo will also as well, and we'll just ask him to maybe step up patrols, and maybe call the sheriff's office as well, to, to step up patrols in that area as well.
I, I did contact the sheriff's office, and he, he told me that they had been patrolling the area. And I did want to add what Charles just mentioned, that it's not just his home that has been regularized. I believe several of your neighbors have had the same problem.
That's correct. Do you all have a neighborhood watch in your area?
No, but that is an excellent idea. And, uh, I'm not really sure how, how to go about getting something like that going, but I would be open to any suggestions.
We, we can work with you on that. There, there's some other areas that have that. We'll see if we can try to compile some information and get that over to you.
I would appreciate it.
Alright.
Thanks for your time.
Will you be the contact person?
I can be, yes.
Thank you. I have, I have, uh, well, the sheriff has, uh, a group that organizes the neighborhood watch.
Okay.
And, and I can call, and, and you'll be the contact person, and I'll be more than glad to be at that meeting.
That sounds very good. I like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, Mr. Robert? Robert Martinez?
My name is Robert Martinez, Laguna Heights. We, in a couple minutes, a couple years, we asked Laguna Heights to put the service closed, to make the hole, make too much hole, too, too loud. Nobody can park it, no, we don't have no inter, everybody blocked the street. We asked for a pipe. Close the street, put pipe, make the street more, 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 more open. It's too little to people be parking in the middle of the street. Nobody can pass, no constable can pass, sheriff can pass, every street is too little to pass for Laguna Heights.
This is, this is, I mean, the inside of Laguna Heights, some of the interior?
Laguna Heights, how, the inside of the city in Laguna Heights. Next meeting, we ask for a pipe, close the pipe, make the, the street more, more open. He can, he proved no. We want to forward a stream, we want to close it to make the street more inch, more open, so everybody can pass. The way he do it, no, nobody can pass, nobody can pass. The car passing in the middle of the street, we say come a pipe, five feet, open the street. The pipe. We want to close this, edit, every pipe, put service going to the street, to the, to the water where we want. We want the street open, more open. Nobody can pass, sheriff, constable, nobody can pass in the middle of the street, that, that street too little.
Is that enough right-of-way, there's not enough right-of-way, right?
Well, you know, the rural construction road, it's a bit easier for the engineer inspection, and what they're asking for is urban construction with underground.
With underground drainage. What I know that the Department of Transportation has done is, the folks that provide the pipes that are not in the plans are being put in for them, right, Pete? But, the only pipes being provided for in that improvement is what was approved by Tech Dot, which was the existing pipes, okay? Not covering everything up, you know, not making an urban road out of a rural road.
Sir, what he wants is the, with the, the bar ditches basically covered and the, and the concrete pipes all the way along, you know, that's like...
Right, around, around, the street can be open more, we can more, carry more parking lot. The parking lot, we're parking outside, like, tree, too little to pass.
Yeah.
It come a five feet, then the path to a street open.
Yeah, and then people park on the street, right? So, you can't get across.
Right, you can pass.
And the ditch on the side is three feet deep, because that's what it...
Right. At the end of the meeting, a couple day, when the city, by Laguna Heights people, I can't, I don't come five, but that again. Next meeting, he prove, I don't know why he said no more.
Well, we have, Mr. Martinez, we have that problem everywhere. I mean, a lot, a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, the, uh, the rural areas have that type, you only have, you know, sixteen-foot wide street, you got three feet of bar ditch, and people park their cars. I know we had that problem in Cameron Park for years.
Yeah, right.
You know, we just couldn't, we just couldn't do it. And so, it's just a matter of, just, it's just, it's all about money, just trying to put enough money to, to be able to do that.
Yeah, it too little, you can go see, you can see, everybody can go see, it too little street, nobody can pass.
Yeah. If people wouldn't park on the street, you'd be okay.
Two, two people can pass, need to pass one for one.
Sure, right, right.
Why, we, next meeting, a couple of days, we ask for that. Nobody answer no question. So, I come again, ask you again, why are you thinking? What you gonna do, what we can do to do this thing, this street open more?
Well, I, I can tell you, I can tell you what's gonna happen. I mean, there's not a whole lot that we're gonna do.
Of course, here, we say that, of course, and I think question, he never answer question back to us.
Well, I can answer your question. It's, it's all about money. You know, it's, it's, it's very expensive to do what you're, you know, what you want to do, and I'm not saying that, that, you know, that it shouldn't happen, but it's all about money. Uh, and we have a lot of colonias, a lot of, you know, rural areas that have identical problems that, that, that you have, identical. And, uh, it's just a matter of just covering it up and putting the pipes the way you wanted, and then keep people from parking on the street.
Right.
But where, but where, where are the people gonna park? That's, that's probably a driveway.
They, they park in the middle of the street.
Yeah.
But if, if the folks that reside in the area buy the pipes, they will be installed by the Department of Transportation, okay?
So, right now, it's county, county having people working over there, right? Who pipe?
Yes, there's people working there.
Well, you can put a street, a pipe, three, push three, half the town, later you put a half the town. Half, half. He, he do a half, right? Right now, while he not close the half first. Later you take, close the other half.
That's what the state approved for the county, that's a state colonial project, and the state approved what is being done now, that area, okay?
Well, right now, right now, the moment I look at my paper, I have a come a twenty, a come a five, whole sign, where the, the city, there in Laguna Heights. We kept, become a sign, a whole sign to do something about it.
That's fine.
It too, too little.
Yeah.
You can ask every sheriff, you can ask...
But that problem, that's just, that's been the same as it's been, at least for the last seven years, though. It hasn't changed. The only thing that's improved is...
Or maybe fifty. I can only speak for the time that I'm busy.
You know, the, the, uh, we had a drainage issue. Those bar ditches were made and improved about six years ago, when the county spent well over a million dollars to improve the drainage. There's no drainage problem anymore. What was lost was the drainage ditch area where now they wish to have it covered up. If we cover that up, we're gonna have a major drainage problem occurring in that area.
We're gonna put pipes.
So, you, you either put pipes, or you leave it open. And, uh, you know, the money for the pipes is not there, as far as I know. I know there's not enough money to even do the whole project.
I have another question, too, this moment. What happened to the light, the corner?
What happened, I'm sorry, what happened to the what?
Well, the light, post light, we need light inside there.
Well, that project is underway, yeah.
Uh, our legal department is finding a way to be able to have each individual person that lives there or family find a way to be able to build them so that they can all cover the cost of the lights. Okay? That's what's going on with the lights.
Okay, I'll be waiting for a question, for a question, for a bike, next meeting, I'll tell you what can do about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're always welcome, Mr. Martinez. Thank you. Any other public comment from anyone that, uh, did not sign up? Consent items? Are there any items any member of the court wishes to, to take out and discuss separately? That also applies to the travel?
Uh, number two.
Item number two, having to do with the Argus Security Systems? I want to pull the one out, just, just so Pete can give us an update on the, uh, on the RFQs. Is that under the consent? Yes, it's item fifteen B. I'd like to take that one out, discuss separately.
Judge, number fourteen, uh, needs to be tabled.
Alright, item fourteen to table, having to do with the, uh, option of annual bid for miscellaneous imaging due to lack of, why is that being tabled, Pete?
I think, um, after the item was placed on the agenda, Mr. Forbes has received, uh, phone calls from some of the department head, and I think, um, his recommendation is gonna be to go ahead and renew, or, or exercise the renewal option.
Okay. Any other item? No? Do I hear motion to approve the consent items two through sixteen B, and travel items seventeen A through seventeen G, with the exception of item number two?
I'd like to, um, also pull out fifteen.
Tabling fourteen A, pulling out all of fifteen, or just the...
All of fifteen. I just have a basic question.
Okay. We'll pull out all of item fifteen B, having to do with bids and RFQs and RFPs. Any other item? Do I hear motion to approve consent items? Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item A, I'm sorry, eighteen A. Conferring Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning County of Cameron versus Cameron County District Attorney out of Mandala Lobos, cause number two zero zero seven dash one zero dash five one three zero dash G. For discussion, authority to hire outside counsel to represent Cameron County, section five five one point zero seven one, one A and two. Item B, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning claim of Joe R. Jones, Inc. contract on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State of, State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to code section five five one point zero seven one, one A and two. Item C, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Vadio Diaz versus Cameron County and Cameron County Precinct Four, Constable Robert Lopez in his individual and official capacities in the one ninety-seventh District Court, cause number two zero zero seven dash one zero dash five zero two seven dash C, for authority to represent Cameron County and Robert Lopez, Constable Precinct Four, and to remove it to federal court pursuant to code section five five one point zero seven one, A and two. Item D, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others, cause number two zero zero five dash zero seven dash three nine zero five A, BFI Waste Services of Texas LP and Waste Management of Texas, Inc., versus County of Cameron at the Thirteenth Court of Appeals, Corpus Christi, Texas, cause number thirteen zero six, six two three dash C V, and BFI Waste Services of Texas LP versus County of Cameron and Red River Service Corporation of Texas, Inc., case number B zero five two seven nine, for discussion of status pursuant to V T C A code section five five one point zero seven one, one A and B. Item E, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection Contract about issue of non-compliance or of default and possible litigation on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to code section five five one point zero seven one, A and two. Lastly, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County Irrigation District Number Six on a claim for payment pursuant to code section five five one point zero seven one, one A and two. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session? Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Wood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item A, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning County of Cameron versus Cameron County District Attorney out of Mandala Lobos. Do I hear a motion?
Uh, move to direct our civil division to cooperate with the district attorney's investigation and his office, up to but not including attorney-client privileged communications, and to authorize our local counsel to hire outside counsel to plead.
Does motion by Commissioner Ganza? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Item carries. Just for a point of clarification, the reason for this motion, contrary to what anybody may think, it's not to protect, um, anybody, including members of the court that were here back in the fall, uh, Mr. Yates, or anybody else. It's a question of protecting the privilege that, that, uh, that we have with our attorney. Um, the DA is, is able to utilize anything they want, having to do with, with this investigation, as long as it does not violate the privileges that, that Commissioners Court has with, um, with their civil division. So, again, it's, it's not, no one to misinterpret that anyone is trying to keep the DA from doing what they need to do, or hiding, or protecting anybody. It's, it's protecting the principle of the privilege that, um, that the court believes it has, um, with our civil attorney. Item B, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning claim of Joe R. Jones, Inc. contract. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Ganza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item C, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Vadio Diaz versus Cameron County. Do I hear a motion to authorize the representation, um, of Mr. Robert Lopez by Cameron County and authorize the, um, this case to be, uh, remanded to federal court?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D and E, um, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County versus BFI Waste Collection and others, and item E, having, uh, Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Red River Solid Waste Collection. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel on both those items?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Benavides. On D and E, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note, uh, the Commissioner Tamayo was not in executive session to discuss these items. Item, item F, confer Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Cameron County Irrigation District Number Six on a claim of payment. Do I hear a motion?
Move to deny claim.
Moved by Commissioner Wood to deny the claim, second by Commissioner Tamayo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note, my abstention on that, I did not participate in those deliberations. Um, okay, back to the regular agenda. So, the consent items that were pulled out to discuss separately. Item two...
The only question I had, uh, it said pending review by legal. Was, did legal move over it, and did, did you sign off on it?
When, um, this item was presented, I wasn't there, Commissioner, and when I came back on Thursday, I received it, and I looked at it, and it's, it's okay.
You did review it?
Yes, ma'am.
And signed off on it?
Yes. I didn't sign off on it, because I wasn't there when it was presented, uh, for, to be put on the agenda, but Richard had it for me on Thursday, when I came back, and I listed the contract, and it's fine.
Do I hear a motion to approve item number two? Consideration approval of contract between Cameron County and Argus Security Systems for the security wall gate.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item fourteen, consideration authorization and renewal option of annual bid. Do I hear a motion to table?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item fifteen, consideration authorization toward bids, RFPs, RFQs for the following. Item A, engineering consulting qualifications, county airport spill, control and county measures planned. Is there an issue with that one, from anyone?
I just had a question. Is E one always the same person, and E two the same person, and E three the same person?
Uh, probably Mike Forbes is the one to answer that.
And I don't want to know who's who, I just want to know if E one is the same individual all the time.
Not necessarily.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, item B.
Move to approve.
Second.
Item B, uh, I'm sorry, item A, moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Tamayo.
Well, I...
All three.
All three.
Okay, well, I've got a question on the, on the consulting, on the Nancy building, and just for clarification, Pete, can you want to explain, um, why we're doing this?
Yes, um, about six or seven years ago, um, we had the, uh, restoration of the exterior of the building done, uh, by a private contractor. Uh, since that time, and I believe about a year ago, Marcelino started noticing some cracks in the terracotta. Um, what we want to do is, um, we want to get a consultant to assist staff, um, in looking at the asphalt plants and looking at the terracotta. My understanding is that not all of the terracotta was restored. Um, there was, uh, portions that, um, were in a condition that did not need restoration, and those were left, um, uh, in place. Um, so what we want to do is bring in a consultant, help us review the asphalt plants, and see if the terracotta that has the cracks is the terracotta that was restored as part of the restoration project, uh, seven years ago. If, in fact, it is, then, when we did the restoration, we have a ten-year warranty on the terracotta. And so, if it is, uh, part that was restored, then we'll go back with legal and look at the warranty issues, and we'll address it at that point. If it is not, then, you know, we're gonna have to take a different step. So, we, the scope with a consultant is gonna be very limited, and we're gonna take it a phase at a time until we can determine, um, whether or not it's one that is, is under warranty. But the warranty was for a ten-year, uh, period.
Alright, that answered my question. Anybody else have any question on item B? No? Okay, item C, architectural qualifications, courthouse, annexed judicial building, second floor, no questions. Do I hear a motion now to approve A, B, and C? Moved by Commissioner Ganza, second by Commissioner Benavides. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item sixteen, consideration authorization, I'm sorry, we've already done that. Item twenty, budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules?
Judging Commissioners, uh, within your packets, there was, um, some line item transfers that were included, and also some, uh, budget amendments setting up some grant funds, and, uh, the salary schedules, um, tied to those, and some that we were pending from, uh, this fiscal year. And I also left, uh, an additional, uh, budget amendment on your desk in front of you, and what that is, um, is actually, uh, setting up, uh, funding for a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from the Gateway Bridge to the General Fund. Uh, and what that is about is, there was two maintenance agreements, uh, one of them for the financial system, uh, that was not included in this, uh, fiscal year's budget, uh, which is seventy thousand dollars, and then there was thirty thousand dollars for a maintenance agreement on the elections, uh, software, election system software. Uh, this was brought to my attention, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, and in discussions with Mr. Sculler and, and the judge, um, the only funding source that we have available at this time was, uh, to transfer it from Gateway Bridge. So, this is, the one for the financial system, they have to pay by the end of the month, so that's kind of the, the urgent one. The election system is due later on in the year, uh, so this is presented to you for your consideration.
Okay. I have a question on, just on the, um, on the salary schedules, and I just, the reason I noticed, because some of the salary schedules are signed by the, uh, by the department head, and most of them are not signed by anybody. Is that something that, that you require, or does this court require the salary schedule to present to be signed off by the department head or an elected official? Or is that something that we just don't care about?
On, on some of these, um, say, for instance, um, let's go to the, if the court has initiated a change, the one in reference specifically to the, uh, the infirmary, uh, last week there was an item to increase, uh, the salary for the infirmary administrator, um, so I prepared it, um, and submitted it for the agenda.
Okay, so, so the ones that are, let's say, for the ones for the title program income and the title VA, those are not, those are grants, but those were not initiated by us?
Correct. I don't prepare those. Actually, whoever's handling the grant, in this instance, the, the Health Department, uh, handles the grants and prepares the salary schedules, and then they forward them, uh, to me, uh, to present to the court.
Okay, so then, what, what you're telling me, though, is that if the court approves a salary increase, when you submit this, it doesn't have to be signed by anybody?
Um, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be signed by, the action of the court approving it, um, it is then stamped as approved, uh, in the, in the payroll department by the Commissioners Court.
Okay. What I would suggest, though, is that, um, once we approve these things, is that maybe somebody just sign off on it, whether it's you, or, or the department head, or something like that, just sign off, so we have some consistency?
Okay.
And I would think the department head.
Or the department head, whichever one, someone's gotta sign up.
I'm gonna take one as an example, like, uh, it's fun slash department two seventy dash sixty-four thirty-eight.
Sixty-four thirty, okay.
Okay. Those two positions there.
Mm-hmm.
Those are signed on.
Correct.
Right? Right? Are, are those two new positions within that grant?
Um, actually, um, the other one, the hospital with the Health Department this year, they're, they're not new positions, they're just carryovers, and it should be, the grant period, if you notice on the top, it's from October first, two thousand and seven to, to August thirty-first, two thousand and eight.
That must be she and something-
At, at the very top in the right-hand corner.
At the very top.
Here?
Yeah, right-
September first?
Or do you use two seven zero six four three eight or?
Well, it's like a thirty-day period, okay?
Well, because of the only four, I apologize.
Somebody's going to get paid those amounts in a thirty-day period?
So what it is, the, the state grants, uh, begin September, uh, they begin September first, uh, they run on the state cycle, so in order to-
Yeah, but that's it?
It is, it is for a thirty-day period.
And you're paying someone that much money for a thirty-day period?
No, uh, because it's only for two pay periods, if you look right next to the salary amount-
Number of pay periods?
For two pay periods, they were paid that amount, uh, and actually for the rest.
And what happens to the rest?
For the same.
Twenty-four on the next page?
That's why they changed it. And they're, correct, and from October to August thirty-first, which coincides, I guess in line, starting with our fiscal year beginning in October, uh, through August thirty-first, which is the end of their grant cycle.
Okay. So that's why there's two separate pages included on that?
Correct. That's because they have separate fiscal years from us. In, in most instances, in this one, they're the same, but in the most instances, it would be, uh, to where, for the month of September, they wouldn't have the increase and then beginning in October first, they would get the, uh, the increase that, uh, whatever the court approves, if, if they have that funding available, but-
Oh, isn't that one?
Yeah.
The reason they're, the two salary schedules are the same, one for September, one for October, when I prepared the salary schedules, uh, I prepared them with a ten-dollar, un, un, uh, excuse me, it was under ten dollars on the nurse practitioner, Ivero Pega, her salary was supposed to end with four eleven and I put four oh one, that's why I submitted the correction for that, I was just suggesting, but yeah, there's our-
A discount, yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're not new positions, they've been there.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gataza, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-one, approval of claims, do I hear motion to approve claims with the additional ones that were passed out?
Yes. So moved.
Second, second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gataza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note my abstentions on the three affidavits that I provided to you. Item twenty-two, approval of minutes for September the twenty-fifth, two thousand and seven. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion for approval.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gataza, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-three, consideration and acknowledgement of the independent accounts report of the Tax Assessor Collector's Office Property Tax Division Audit Controls from Long and Chilton CPAs and payment thereof, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood, do I have a second by Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor-
The only question I would have is, when they issue this type of report, there's no management letter or no-
No.
Nothing of that sort?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-four, well, let me rephrase that, I did not receive one, so if, if there was no management letter, then I'm assuming that there were no management comments. Rob, is that correct?
Tony's back.
Is everybody's head nodding?
Yes or no?
Is that correct? All right.
No management letter?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-four, consideration authorization to reimburse Tex- the Texas Department of Transportation additional local participation funds for the U.S. Business eighty-three project, do I hear motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gataza, seconded by Commissioner Wood, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-five, discussion and possible action to renew property insurance with current insurance carrier, Tex Association of Counties, Rob, you recommend its approval?
We, we just need you to decide whether you want a thousand dollar deductible or a five thousand dollar deductible.
Any recommendations?
Tom, when I sit here, which is, uh-
Well, I would have the five, but-
I think, make sure that the microphone's on, Rob, because I don't think we could, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
We need you to decide whether you want a thousand dollar deductible or a five thousand dollar deductible.
What's the difference in the premium with the higher deductible?
Oh, I got that just a second. Thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend that we go the five thousand dollar deductible.
That's what I would recommend.
When was the last time we went out for bids for this?
Well, we're, we're in the process of preparing bid specs for them and because of the timing on this one, we would, would recommend you go ahead and renew it and it'll be bid with all the others at the same time with, I believe it's the March nineteenth renewal date.
Yes, that, that part I, I recall having read and understand, but when was the last time we went out for bids?
I would don't know when the last time we bid it.
Do I hear a motion to approve, um, the extension with a five thousand, five thousand dollar deductible?
Uh, legal didn't sign off on that, is there any reason why?
It wasn't presented to me or I wasn't here on Tuesday and Wednesday, Commissioner, I don't know if it was presented to Richard or not.
Is there any need for that?
Not really.
No need for that?
I don't think so.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gataza, any further discussion?
Just one question, when, uh, when you renew this, do you have to pay the premium upfront for the whole year, Mr. Oram?
Yes, ma'am.
You do?
They, if, when it is, when we bid it out, they'll be prorated back to it.
Okay, so we'll get credit, I mean, so, you can't go just month to month?
Uh, that's not the way they set it up, but I can inquire if we can.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item twenty-six, discussion possible action regarding the county, state, and federal legislative agenda, Pete?
Judging Commissioners, only one item, um, been talking to Angela Burden from the Brownsville Chamber of Commerce, um, she's been working with Representative Oliveta's office and, um, the, the Border Security Task Force of the Mexican-American Legislative Caucus, um, is going to have their first public meeting, um, in Brownsville next Monday, uh, and they'll be here also on Tuesday, uh, which is the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Um, the Mexican-American Legislative Caucus, it's a group of forty-three members of the Texas House of Representatives, and, uh, they're Hispanic or have large Hispanic populations, uh, among their constituents. Um, the caucus created the Border Security Task Force to review the spending of the hundred million dollars, um, that's going to be appropriated to state and local agencies, uh, to determine the best use, um, of that state funding and to determine the appropriate state funding levels. On Monday, uh, between one and, and four, they're going to tour the Veterans Bridge, um, at Los Tomates, um, primarily on the, uh, Customs Border Protection side, and then from there, they'll go to the port of Brownsville. Um, that evening, they're going to have, uh, dinner, um, around seven o'clock, the chamber is, is interested in, in seeing if the county, um, can have a reception, uh, for the, the, um, for the Border Security Task Force, um, since they're all members of the State House of Representatives, um, the ideal, if we could host a reception here, um, at the Dancy Building, uh, being that, you know, we, we did get state funding for the restoration of this project, um, the only issue with that, uh, when you think of a reception, you know, there's alcoholic beverages, uh, that are served, and I don't know that that's something that the court wants to consider doing or not, um, we do have, you know, a, a Plan B, uh, I've talked to IBC Bank, um, and they're willing to, um, to allow us to use their facility on, on FM eight oh two, um, logistically, it, it, you know, it might work because they're going to dinner right across the street, so, um, you know, that, that's, that's, um, that's something to consider, again, you know, the, the only issue with us having the, the reception here is the, um, the serving of alcoholic beverages.
But to them, is that-
Yeah, yeah, it's, the reception will be from them.
So why would it be a problem? Why would it be a problem then?
That's, you know, that's, that's a decision that the court can make, you know, we do have a, a, a policy on, on the use of facilities, but-
But by the same, I thought that was just referred to employees.
No? No? It refers to county premises. I, I'd say have the function of IBC Bank, they can do anything they want there, it's a private place.
I had thought that we agreed to, if someone wanted to use it for that and serve alcoholic beverages, that it would come before this commission and we would make a determination at that time based on them also having security available.
So the issue becomes, it becomes arbitrary, you know, one, you know, we'll do it now and then next another group comes in and we call this-
Well, that's, no, it has to come before us, I think, and I think that's what we talked about, so, and-
I don't remember talking about it.
Perhaps we didn't, um, research it.
Well, we have a policy, if we want to change the policy, I think we change it, but I, I think that instead of keeping the policy of prohibiting alcoholic, alcoholic beverages at county facilities, I think is, is-
How do you change it between now and Monday and there's daily emergencies, you don't?
Well, you don't.
Special meeting?
You don't. I don't think it warrants a special meeting to do that.
They go to IBC, that's my personal-
If they want to tour the buildings, they can come and tour-
They're more than welcome to come tour the building and see their tax dollars at work.
All right, with a cloak. So then, uh, the, the direction that you want to give, Pete, is to, is to what, is there a motion that we have to make with this or just a, do we have to let them know informally what the court wants to do or do we have to take affirmative action right now and ask them as part of this to, to, uh, undertake IBC's, unless you all want to have it here and do the policy, I hope you all, you all want to make a motion, you can.
I mean, you don't drink alcoholic beverages at the state capital, do you?
No.
Um, I believe at the state capital, they do and, and I think at the nation's capital, they, they also do.
They do? At the, inside they do?
Yes.
Yes. Because I've never been to that place.